Thank you.
I already got one, too.
Oh, it's 5:30, Joe. Train on time.
Today is Tuesday, August 9 of 2022. The Committee of the Whole will come to order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its assistance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call of members.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin. Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chair, accorum, is present.
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Alderman Donlin called. He was elected to be a Duke Eric Fellow. He said he would be at University of Illinois and he was afraid that he would be unable to make
Thank you for that information. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the July 26 Committee meeting minutes?
No move.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Chair McMiniman. The Corporate Fund in the month of July had a beginning balance of $75,371,539. We took in total receipts of $12,281,479. We had total disbursements in the month of July of $25,625,574, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance in the month of July of $62,27,444. Of that balance, Chair McMiniman, the ARCA fund balance was $26,982,191. And I would like to conclude, thank you, Chair McMiniman, because this is the last time I will have the pleasure of giving you my report.
Well, you never know what history might do, but I might move over to, you know, Ward 1 and then challenge Ward 1 over there. Tom, I want to show you how to get your tail.
Here we go.
All right, let's calm down, everybody. We want to have a one-hour meeting if possible, okay. Is there any comments regarding the most recent Office of Budget and Management Contract Report? We received that from Ms. Long in the last couple of days. Thank you for the July report, Ms. Long. If there's no comments regarding the report, we'll move on to presentations. I'm going to make a brief presentation regarding the Wyndham. I'm going to offer a few reflections and thoughts about the Wyndham situation. The premise of this presentation is that we all want what is best for Springfield and downtown, or we wouldn't be here at the Horseshoe. And today, I did have a direct phone call with Mr. Mitchell, the potential buyer in New York, and also with Mr. Rajabi after Mr. Larson patched him in on the phone call. I love downtown Springfield, that's why I've lived or worked in downtown since 1979 when I arrived here, that's 43 years ago. And in the last 30 years, I've been a renter downtown. And my office mate and I, when you add up all the rent money and utility money and insurance money, I'm sure it adds up to a half million dollars of commitment to downtown. And that's, we love downtown, and we all do, and we want the best for downtown. My earliest memories of downtown began in 1973. I was a sophomore at the U of I at the time, and I hitchhiked over here to see a U of I girlfriend. She was on the north side. I remember a state police officer gave me a ride the rest of the way to downtown, and I remember seeing the Form 30 at that time. That was the first time I'd seen it. It was just kind of completing construction. It was a massive sight to see downtown, you know, no building approached its height. And that made a big impression on me. Then in 1979, I actually moved to Springfield after law school. In the fall of 1979, my parents came down to witness me being sworn in as an attorney by then appellate Judge Mills, who has just retired as a federal judge here in Springfield. And so my parents had a room in the hotel, and that was the first time I'd been to a hotel room in the Form 30. And I remember getting up there and looking out the window and just seeing Springfield forever. It was a very kind of a powerful experience to be that far up in the sky and looking out. Then in the 1990s, I have memories of Chuck Redpath and I, we had, you won't remember me, but we would work out in the basement of the Form 30 when they had a gym down there. That was in the 1990s, isn't that correct? You worked out down there.
Yeah, I did.
So I knew who you were, but you didn't know who I was, because you were an Alderman already.
Until now.
Until now. It's been a good seven years.
I don't need that visual.
We're still working on it. So in the decade of this century, you know, we all have a lot of memories of attending events, banquets, and so forth at the Form 30, now the Wyndham. You know, so the goals, I think we'd be unified in the goals we have for the Wyndham. We'd like to put $25 million of improvements into an aging structure with significant deferred maintenance. We'd like to maintain a strong convention business. We'd like to populate downtown with residents, given all that's left downtown. We'd like to get our city WLP $1 million paid off that the current hotel owes us. We'd like to avoid an empty depreciating Hulk downtown. Here's some of the facts, I think, that we can all agree with. The current owner wants out. He's got an unprofitable hot hotel right now. He's behind on his utility bills by, like we said, a million dollars roughly. He's suffering from very low occupancy rates in the 25% range, a lot of empty hotel rooms there. On the good side, we do have a buyer that wants to buy and to put new life and lots of money into an aging structure. It's hard to find buyers of hotels with lots of money. They're very hard to find, especially in the current market environment. And at the same time, lenders to continuing big-box hotels are hard to find because of the changing market. It's hard for the current owner to find a lender for him to reinvest in the hotel. So that's why the new potential owner is trying to come up with a mix of apartments and hotel rooms to make it viable. You know, ultimately, filled apartment units offer significant value compared to empty hotel rooms, both for the owner of the building, but also for all of downtown, as restaurant owner Michael Higgins described to us last Wednesday night. And, you know, apartment efficiencies, if we do do the conversion of apartment efficiencies and more market forces move in a different direction, those can always be converted back to hotel rooms based on market demand after those rooms have been significantly improved and made more desirable for visitors and so forth. This whole situation with Wyndham has gotten complicated. Normally, we don't need a supermajority to pass a zoning variance, but what happened at the Zoning Commission, our Springfield Zoning Commission, we had two members that were not there that night, two members were absent, and one member voted present, which meant that at the Zoning Commission, it ended up with a four-to-three vote in favor of the variance. But for it to, under the rules of the Zoning Commission, you need five votes for it to be considered approved. So even though there are four votes in favor, three against, it came to the City Council unapproved, and so that's why we needed a supermajority. Now, we heard last Tuesday night, we had some really good testimony, really good information provided to us. I think the most significant came from Growth Alliance Ryan McCready. You know, we pay, this council pays the Growth Alliance a quarter of a million dollars a year to give us good advice, a quarter of a million dollars a year to try to promote economic development. And I think we've paid that five years in a row. So we've put out $1.25 million to get good economic development advice. I think when he was in favor of the variance Tuesday night, or excuse me, last Wednesday night, so we got to take that into consideration. The next day, so we met on a Wednesday night, the next day, Thursday, I was listening to Mike Murphy of the Chamber of Commerce. He served in the General Assembly until he took that position. And he, too, expressed a view in favor of the variance for the hotel. He said it was a private view because apparently the chamber hasn't taken a vote on it. So I thought that was significant. And we remember what restaurateur Michael Higgins, he spoke for three or four minutes about the positive impact that the reinvestment in the Wyndham could have and the increased foot traffic we want downtown. You know, many of us can remember when the south side of the old state capitol was just loaded with people at noon time, with all the vendors there. It was hard to walk around, it was so crowded. We don't have that foot traffic today, but we want to get back to it. And finally, the Downtown Springfield, Inc., they came to the council last Wednesday night and expressed their favorable vote towards giving some zoning relief to the new owner. I did have a conversation, a direct person-to-person conversation with both Mr. Rajabi this morning and with Mr. Mitchell. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for reaching out to both of them. And I think it's due to those reach-outs that Mr. Mitchell filed a new zoning petition this week with our Zoning Commission. I think he's changed it enough so, you know, it hopefully will get really strong support in the Zoning Commission. It'll be heard at the Zoning Commission, Mr. Mayor, if this is correct, on Wednesday, September 21. So we have a chance to revisit this issue after the proposal goes through the Zoning Commission again. Mr. Rajabi, I would say, you know, he is frustrated. I think he's really on the tipping point to pulling the plug, but I think this refiling of the zoning petition may allow him to, he wants to cut his losses. He's suffering, the hotel is suffering. But I think this may give him incentive to hang in there with this and see if we can reach a resolution that everyone can go along with. So in conclusion, for the good of downtown Springfield and all of Springfield, we need to get this transfer of ownership done somehow, some way. Let's work towards that. We have no better options. We have no other options. If we, we've got someone who wants to spend $25 million, let's find a way to make it happen. Let's continue working towards a reasonable mix of hotel rooms and apartments. Let's not let 25 rooms difference, you know, kill this. Let's keep working towards a solution. We need to get that improvement done. When we make that improvement done on the hotel, the value of the hotel will triple, and that'll be good for any kind of tax assessments, whether it goes to a new TIF or an old TIF, or eventually those TIFs expire, and we want to have all that revenue there that an improved Form 30 can generate. So that's my best shot at it. And as the City Treasurer said when I arrived, she said, hey, this is your last month to be a chairman of this council, so I'm glad to try to put together something that is meaningful, that is so important to our city, which is downtown and the Wyndham. Any discussion or comments before we move on to our ordinances? Oh, we got to look at this, okay. Thank you.
Last meeting, keep pointing at the screen.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley wishes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I have just some clarification. So you just said that the profits will triple?
The value of the property hopefully will triple. You know, if it's worth seven million now, eight million, and they put 25 million into it, hopefully that turns into a more valuable building, correct?
Yeah, that would be hopeful, that would be nice. I will just say, I've gotten significant pushback on the fact that the last proposal had 80% of those units being basically single hotel rooms. So it's a single hotel room that they're going to put a kitchen into, and that's 340 square feet. I had a lot of people reach out to me and say, how is that not going, I mean, who's going to want that in downtown Springfield? So I think it's not just the number of hotel rooms, but the type of apartments, too. The overwhelming majority of that proposal were very, I mean, basically, an existing hotel room with a kitchenette in it. And then people have a problem with that. So I think, you know, that needs to be, I just want to make that clear. I think that was a weakness of the prior proposal.
That's a really good point, but the risk will be on the new owner. And if his efficiencies, as you point out, are not as popular as he wishes them to be, then he's going to have to adjust his market plan, but we still end up with an improved hotel.
Possibly, or we end up with a building that has what we've been threatened with by the current owner, which is subsidized housing with small units that don't actually provide the kind of foot traffic that Chef Higgins was talking about. We want people to be downtown who are going to be, you know, I think, you know, Mayor, you turned down supporting a proposal, as I understand from the media, for the Myers Building, where it wasn't bringing in, you know, mid to higher income residents. It's, when you're talking about 340 square feet in Springfield, Illinois, and I love Springfield, but I just don't see a demand for, in the housing market, for units that small.
I understand the concerns. I think we need to let market forces determine some of that, but after someone puts in $25 million to improve a building, I don't think they're going to try to go to Section 8 or that kind of housing. I think they're going to come up with a new plan to pay off their bills, and that means, you know, higher rent or go back to hotels. And by then, maybe the hotel convention situation is fully recovered from COVID by then, and they'll have better success. I'd like to recognize Ward 10, Alderman Hanauer, and then Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. A couple things, and I was listening last week, and I picked a good one to miss, but I was listening most of the time.
Yes, agree on that.
The only difference was I wasn't drinking water while I was listening, so. I guess my question is, on this zoning, it was my understanding that we've got rules on zoning, that you can't bring something back once it's failed for, unless there's a significant change in the zoning, you can't bring it back for like 18 months or 12 months or something. And I just questioned after hearing, you're only talking, they're doing the exact same thing, only changing the number of rooms, and, you know, I question whether it's valid, if it's following our rules.
Well, we'll have to hear from the attorney that advises the zoning commission.
Right. And then, finally, I've had, I can't tell you the number of people that have come up to me, and they are absolutely livid about this project. They think it's bad, it's bad for downtown. Putting 300 hotels, or 300 apartments in one building, that's just crazy. And the feedback I get, and it's not just in my ward as I go around town, they're not for it. And so I guess my first question would be, you know, Corporation Counsel, they're not changing the zoning, this isn't a major change. So how are we allowing them to come back without, they're going against our zoning rules?
Yeah. I don't know who's calling you, but I know that when Ryan McCready talks, who was former manager of the City of Decatur, who really dug into these issues, we got to think of who's calling this, and how much weight do we want to put into each kind of person? I know, as, you know, as an 11-year member of the City Council, what I'm hearing is they're confused by the facts. I've had some, like, knowledgeable people say to me, well, the new owner is going to put in subsidized housing, and the exact opposite is the truth. So there's a lot of confusion out there, and we have to be, as leaders, and try to get the accurate facts out there so that we can be leaders based on reliable information and what the expectations are.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, Brian McCready, Ryan said, all he vouched for was that David was a reputable contractor. He never, he never said ever in his statement that he was for or against it. All he did was vouch that the developer was a legitimate developer. That's all he said.
Yeah.
He did not, he did not support the project, and he did not.
No, don't say the opposite either. I mean, if he wants to say neutral on the variance, that's one thing, but don't start saying he's against it.
You're saying that he supported the project, he did not, he did not say that either way.
He supported the credibility of the future buyer.
But that's different than supporting a project.
Well, okay, you're kind of splitting it kind of close there.
I would like to know from Mr. Zirkle about the zoning.
Well, could we let that go through the zoning first?
Why don't we let all this go through zoning first? What are we doing?
Exactly.
Why are we having this?
Well, because it's called democracy, we get to have a presentation.
No, you're the chair, and you put together a presentation that we all know this.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to say anything further before we get out of here?
Point of order, I ask a question of the Corporation Counsel.
Yeah, I'd like the Corporation Counsel to answer the question.
Yeah, that's fair enough. I agree. Sorry. What I was going to say is, we will look at that issue. There is a rule that indicates that if they're asking for the same request, and so we'll take a look at that and we'll give proper advice, you know, to the commission. It's my understanding they did file, they have filed, so we'll take a look at that and see how that applies.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We've got.
Yeah, a little more further clarification. When they first approached the zoning, I think the first one was to turn it all into apartments. So I'm the one that said, no, we have to protect the convention space and hotel rooms, things of that nature. So when they went to planning and zoning, it's my understanding that the group amended to 320 rooms, 80 hotel rooms, or 320 apartments. So, but Corporation Counsel will check that, but it is a significant change when they filed, it's my understanding, to 275 apartments, 125 hotel rooms. I've been told by numerous individuals that were objecting that this was the sweet spot that could make it through it, but as Alderwoman DeSensio said, you know, let's run through the process, because I'm sure we're going to have this discussion again in 60 days, and that gives us plenty of time to, you know, dive into the details and to a greater level. But with regards to the Myers Building, I didn't turn that down, Ida turned it down, Illinois Housing Development Authority. Well, we had presented to Ida with regards to downtown housing was with Andarondak, that's when the City Council approved the vacant property off Jefferson for that type of zoning. So that was already zoned. We were doing a targeted TIF, we, you know, offered a letter of support. The Myers Group, not them personally, but the entity from outside Springfield, applied for the Ida tax credits. They want, they didn't, they rejected not only that one, they rejected the Andarondak project and Booth Ferguson, come to find out. The only one that had the city's support was the Andarondak. And that's what the rub was with regards to the Myers developer. They kept trying to get a letter from the city saying, oh, they're going to approve it. And in our conversations and discussions with Ida, what they preferred happening was to have a strategic plan for downtown and the medical area to show what support was needed for affordable housing units or workforce housing units. So that's the direction we're going, that's the discussion we had with the developer along with Ida, and, you know, that's what we're moving towards with SSGA Downtown Springfield and, you know, the Foundation and others. The reason Ida was reluctant is because they've already awarded tax credits to Poplar Place, which was 100 units, I believe. 50 of those would be converting the duplexes to single-family housing, as well as 50 duplex units still, and lessening the density that's over there currently. The other one is Pinewood Apartments, I think, on Ward 7, which was 200 units or so. Alderman McMiniman can verify that. And then Helping Hands Project, which was 20-some units. So you have nearly 400 units of affordable housing coming into Springfield. They really wanted to see how that impacts our housing market with regards to affordable housing before approving anything further, you know, with regards to Springfield. So that's where that denial came from, it came from Ida. But, you know, that's when we offered, you know, let's look at the market rate and see if they wanted to do that, and they didn't, they were reluctant in doing that and moving that direction. So we do, the good news is, we do have another developer that's interested, but time will tell if that comes to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Redpath?
You know, I do agree with your statement, Alderman, that we all do really care about downtown Springfield. That has never been in question whatsoever. But if there is a process that the administration takes back to through the planning zoning and it gets to us, it's going to be a couple of months. And I have a lot of questions, but I don't want to do them tonight, because we've been through this so long for the last couple of weeks. So I don't want to get accused of cutting people off, but we need to move on and deal with this when it gets back to us.
That's right. We want to try to have a one-hour meeting tonight, so let's get back on schedule.
You're cutting into that.
But Alderman Williams, you wish to talk?
I just, you know, I just think we can't lose sight of whatever we do, and what we've done so far is there's no hotel. I mean, it won't be a hotel there. So we can't sit up here and then act to the public like we're so concerned about convention space, conventions, loss of conventions, and none of that. We have to take responsibility for that. I think that guy came and said clearly, I'm failing, I'm trying to get rid of this building, there's a guy trying to invest to help us out, and we told him no twice. So I don't know what's going to happen now. I guess the rules have played herself out, but I will keep reminding us, we could end up without that not being a hotel. And I think our Director of Convention and, you know, Tourism has said to us that kind of impact, and I just think we have to keep remembering that, because it would be this council that helped bring that to fruition, because this guy has came and told us what's going on.
Thank you, Alderman Williams. So now we're going to move to ordinances tabled or remaining committee. They are 2022-256.
Alderman. Actually, Alice Ramey had requested to speak on your presentation.
With the permission of the council, Alice Ramey, if you want to say something regarding the presentation regarding Wyndham, please do so.
I'm glad you brought it back, Alderman 7, okay? I have lived in this town for 82 years, all but 10. When I came back, was the first thing I saw was Form 30. But what else I saw was the firemen practicing with their ladders to go up that building in case somebody got hurt. But what else is that people are talking about 350 square feet. I believe you said last week, or week before, that you had lived in a small room. I have two. When I was in LA, I lived in a hotel that was converted to apartments on the top, clothing store on the bottom, and the rest was Section 8. I don't know if you people have ever lived in a Section 8 building before, but it's not what you call cool, you know? I mean, it's not, you have all kinds of different music coming out, and you do everything. But I want to see this Springfield prosper. I want it to be the top-notch Springfield in town, that we are not sitting and making it go down the drain. And if he decides to do this before they get their approval or disapproval when they go through the zoning, you're all going to be without a hotel, and you're going to have nothing but Section 8 up there. And that's only, what, 750 a room? That's once a month. I'd rather have a table when I'm serving turned three times a night for I can make the money. And I'd rather have the hotel and apartments, and whatever it is, I want to see it grow, and I want it to prosper downtown. As it is downtown, like he said, we used to have, sit out there around the Capitol and eat and have fun, talk to different people. We can't do that. We haven't done that. We haven't even had music down at the Capitol in the afternoon. The old man that used to play the accordion, that was all the music we had until some kids got ready to practice their band, and we had that. Downtown used to be the best place to come in Springfield. Now it's, well, we will go someplace else. Our go-to mom and pop is Damling Joints, okay? And that's something that is not what I call Springfield. And we had the And we had the best history in this town. We do. I understand of 1908, my father was born when that was going on. Also, Lincoln was the president from this state and lived in Springfield. So, those are things that people need to know, need to keep this city going and build it up. And then when these people talk about Springfield coming here for a convention, oh, yeah, I want to come. Boy, we can do a lot of things down there. What can they do now? Nothing but sit in their hotel room or drink until they're done or go to a gambling joint. I mean, that's the way I feel about this. I talked to both men. One is really wanting to put Section 8 in there, but the other one wants to make it popular, make it great, make it in the modern age. Let's go for it. And Attorney Circle, Council, would you find out if that's true, that they can't come back in 18 months or whatever the case that Ward 10 said? Because if that's the case, then we got a hotel with no rooms.
Thank you, Alice.
You're welcome.
So, moving now to ordinances or remaining committee, we've got 2022-256, 2022-285, 2022-337. Madam Ward 8, do you wish to-
Yes, I'd like to bring 2022-337 out for discussion and then addition to the debate agenda.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to take.
Bring it to debate.
2022-337 out of committee for debate. All those in favor, say aye. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it.
On the motion, just to-
Oh, sorry, not on the motion, no.
Okay. So, all those in favor bringing it out, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2022-337, an ordinance authorizing the creation of an exterior rehabilitation program for exterior rehabilitation purposes for the areas of the city outside of TIF districts and the cannabis grant. District utilizing housing building code violation fines and registration fees collected in amount not to exceed $300,000 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $300,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, Chair. So, Council, this is, this is an ordinance that's grown out of some really difficult conversations I've had with residents in my ward. There are people, and I would like to actually offer an amendment to this language. What this program proposes to do is use fines and fees that are collected from housing violations to go into a dedicated fund that will be, that will be accessible for low-income residents that are, that own their home, that live outside of an area that currently has other exterior modification and enhancement programs. So, my ward, Ward 10, 9, we have no, no, no zones. No, there's nothing that can, that can be used to, for our residents to make improvements to their home with support from the city. And so, the hope of this is, you know, I had one woman who told me, you know, I've got a fine. I don't know how, how I'm going to pay this fine because I don't know where I'm going to get the money to fix what I need to do, and I know it needs to be taken care of, but I'm on a fixed income, and this is not sustainable for me. What I'd like to do with this program is address those people who live outside of other, other, other zones and give them an opportunity to bring those houses up to code, to make sure that they're, they're improving and maintaining our neighborhoods. We know in our older neighborhoods, and I have a fair amount of those in my ward, that it only takes one house that starts to slide in quality where, and it starts to bring the neighborhood down. And, and it's unfortunate. I mean, I, we got a bid for a roof on our house this year, and it was shocking. So, if you're on a fixed income, you own your home and you're living in there, repairs happen, repairs have to happen, and they are expensive and they're difficult. And so, I would, well, I would like to put this on debate so that we can have another conversation about it next week. I strongly urge everyone to please support this program. I think we owe, we owe it to people who don't live in a TIF district, who don't live, don't, can't take, you know, advantage of the programs that we have through our cannabis programs, because I see that stabilizing neighborhoods, and I, and I think it's fabulous. So, really, what this is supposed to do is just track the, the same requirements that we have for existing exterior rehabilitation programs. The one modification I would like to make as an amendment, currently the language reads that you cannot use this to address a violation. I would like to change that to this, this program, these funds can be accessible to people who have been issued a violation as long as those homeowners are working with our, our, our city enforcement. So, you know, if someone gets, someone gets a ticket for their, their siding looking, looking bad, they've got handrails going up to their front steps that need to be fixed, they can access this program, and it's a 50-50. City can provide 50% as reimbursement. Homeowner has to bring their own, put their own skin in the game, but they can access these funds as long as they're immediately addressing a violation. This is not for people who've been dragging their feet. This is not for, for renters, you know, rental properties to be fixed up. This is for low-income, fixed-income homeowners to maintain their, their, their homes and maintain the quality of their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Do you wish to then wait till next week to give us the exact wording for that amendment?
No, I think I've, Mr. Zirkle, do you understand kind of where I was going with that?
I believe so. What I can do is to reduce that to writing and circulate it, but I think I understand what you're, you're, you're indicating, that you want the applicant to be eligible even in the event of a violation, so long as they're using that to address the violation.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, so I'd like to, I would actually then make a motion to add this to the debate agenda for next week.
It's all move.
Second.
Okay, and we'll take a vote on that after this couple more that want to speak on to the issue.
All right, all people speak.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chair McMenamin. I, I'm glad that you brought this, this forth. I believe we spoke on this in the past a little bit, but, because I have areas in, in, in my ward in on the east side that are outside the cannabis and the TIF, and, you know, that was one of the first things I got yelled at about. I came in sort of towards the end of the new Far East TIF being created, and there were some people south of South Grand that was left out. So, this, this ordinance only makes me curious to wonder, and Public Works will probably try to have to help us out, is where are most of our housing violations coming from? Because I, I sort of feel like, you know, I'm okay with this, but I wish there was another fund or something to use, because I, I sort of feel like to use the funds that were, that were using, taken away from, you know, the neighborhoods that, that, you know, are, are in shambles anyway, and to use them in other places is, is, you know, is sort of hurting. I, I think, you know, if we can do programs like this, then we should be able to waive some fines and, and do some things for people, you know, in existing TIF and cannabis areas as well as outside of existing TIF cannabis areas. So, you know, for me, I, I support this type of ordinance, but I would, I would, you know, one, I think the match and, and, you know, when we get to our TIF and our housing programs as well, I think we have to address that. I think we have to address our match, even in outer areas, probably out in Ralph's Ward, a $10,000 roof. I'll say yours is probably $10,000. But a lot of people are going to have a hard time coming up with $5,000. And, and, and I really strongly with this, as well as our TIF programs in Enos Park and SHA and Far East TIF, I think we need to look at that and, and make it affordable for people to really access these programs. You know, so I do support this in theory. I would like Public Works to give me some, some numbers on where these, these fines come from, and, and hopefully we can prioritize hitting those spots first before we go out to some of the richer areas that, that probably will be able to get closer to $5,000.
Can I, Chair, can I respond quickly?
If it's brief, you have any-
Yeah, I just, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm going to question a little bit. I mean, when you say richer areas, we're talking about low-income owners, generally speaking. I mean, I, I have, I have, I have a significant portion of my ward that, that is a low-income census tract, you know, that meets those kinds of standards. Really what I'm trying to do is, is bring a program forward that allows those homeowners who've invested, you know, their, their life, their, their time and their energy into there, and, you know, it's, it can be difficult to make those repairs, but give them a foot up to maintaining those neighborhoods. Part of the concept behind this and taking it from housing violations and code violations is that it's sort of a self-sustaining fund where people who aren't doing what they should be doing are supporting people who want to do the right thing but can't afford to do it. So, so that's, that was my thought process behind that source of funding.
I agree, and I, and I like that. I, I agree, but I'm, I'm just going off of examples that, that I come across a lot in our community. And I spoke on this, this, this house, one of the last houses from the Hay Homes. And she has problems, and, and we fine her a lot, and she can't get the assistance. She needs to fix the house because she owes, you know? And, and so I like that portion of your, of your amendment. I just worry that I'm, I'm not a gambling man anymore, but I would imagine that 60% of these fines probably come from Eastern MacArthur. And I know some of your-
Well, let's wait and see, because I, I know, I know I've heard from plenty of people in my ward who've been, who've been hit with fines and, so.
Alderman Hannah, and then Alderman Williams.
And I would point out, Alderman Gregory, that, you know, you don't know, in, in many cases, the, the houses could be rentals, and we don't know where the people live in town that they're, that are the landlords too. So, I mean, that's, that's a whole nother can of worms. But I appreciate this coming forward because one of the toughest things I, I've ever had to deal with was I had an older gentleman that lived in a house in Westchester. Now, Westchester's a nice neighborhood, but he built, he bought real early, and he lived there basically his whole life. And his roof was bad. Now, he's retired, fixed income. He's not rich at all, and he couldn't fix his roof. He got cited, and they called, what, what do I do? I said, well, you got to fix your roof. And he goes, I can't. I don't have the money. What do I do? Tried to find a program. There's no program out on the west side because everybody thinks that everybody's rich out there. This is a case where we, we could have helped the, the gentleman, and, and I think he ended up having to sell his house because he couldn't, he just, he couldn't do it. And, you know, this was a case where that, it really bothered me for a while because we, we didn't have anything. You know, keep in mind, we, we have the, the cannabis money that, that, that we, you know, we voted, and we, we've got TIF districts, and we've got all this, but there's, there's some areas of town that have lower-income people, and they don't, we have zero programs, absolutely zero. And I think that that's an area that, that I think we're missing. So, I think this is good, and if I could be a co-sponsor on this, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so, so I don't really, my issue's more with the amendment. I, I think we have to be careful with the cited, you know, once they're cited, because we got people right now that complain to me, you know, marijuana, TIF, you name it, I owe because I've been cited, so I can't use that program. But yet, your amendment is saying, even if I'm cited, I can use the program to help fix what I'm cited for. So, that's one thing I think we definitely really need to pay attention to and try to let legal work that, you know, that part out for us, I guess. I, I do think it's a good program. The other thing I would say, this thing, I've got tons of people waiting for this. If, if this goes through, I've got tons of people that complain. I'm not in the TIF. I'm not in the marijuana map. I need, you know, so, and then my last question to, I guess, economic development, we have no programs for the people in Springfield unless you're in the TIF or marijuana?
CDBP.
Well, so, so my whole point of asking that is, I mean, how, how far do we go with this, you know? Okay, so we're going to base it on income, you say, right?
Yeah, same, same income standards that we use for, yeah, same that we use for the existing TIF programs. Literally copied them.
Well, I just think this money is gone by the time you, and then to, again, to the department, how do you rank it, score it, or first conference? What are we going to be doing? So, I, I need to know more about how the process will work, because this is going to be more popular than what you're imagining. And, and I know some of you might think, oh, it's going to take care of people out west who are in this category, which I know there's a lot of, but there's a whole bunch of them on the fringes of these maps of those census tracts that the state and federal government constantly say are, are your problems over there. They're waiting for something like this. So, and we say, what, $300,000? I just think it's going to be a lot more popular than what you think, and I would like to know how, what order so many per ward, or, I mean, what are we doing? That type of thing.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
You want to go again?
I, I hit my button, Joe, or Alderman, sorry.
You want to go again?
Yes, please. Alderman Williams, I think you raise a good point. I'd certainly be happy to increase the amount of money that goes into this program. I want to make sure that we're not taking too much from other programs simply because I know those funds go right back into our general, general fund. One other point, if, if there's an issue with, with the TIF program with people, you know, who've gotten a fine and, and they want to use the TIF to, to fix it, I would suggest that you bring an ordinance forward and amend the, amend that exterior rehabilitation program.
Aye, it's working.
That's why I'm, I mean, this is scratch from new, and I'm like, well, that was part of my problem that I'm trying to address for, for residents in my ward and for residents in the city that don't have access to these other incentive programs. So, yeah, bring an ordinance. I, I think it's not a bad idea. I think we need to give people who are, who are genuinely trying to, you know, and we know, our inspectors work with people. They, they do. They, they, they try to get, make, you know, to work with people. We, we know you've got to, you know, get around this, we'll give you extra time. See what they have to do. Maybe that's something that needs to be examined for existing exterior rehabilitation programs too. But I would like, as long as people are genuinely working with our inspectors, I think they need to be given at least access to, to a possible solution to, to their problem.
All right, good discussion. Now, time for a vote. All those for yes for debate, say, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
CWLP, 2022-338, an ordinance authorizing the technical support and maintenance for P1 historian software for the Dahlman Power Plant Electric Generation Department from Alsea Soft LLC in an amount not to exceed $66,330 for the Office of Public Utilities.
For consent, bucket. There's a motion for consent. Any discussion? There be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2022-339, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with Wood Group USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $59,500 for the engineering study to evaluate the prospect of converting Dahlman's Unit 4 to entirely natural gas operation for the Office of Public Utilities.
Vote for debate.
Second.
There's a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion? There be none. All those in favor of the debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2022-340, an ordinance renaming the roadway known as Bear Boulevard to O'Shea Way for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discuss-
Real quick.
Alderman Hannah.
Thanks for, thanks for doing this. Mr. O'Shea was a, was an incredible man, and I know the O'Shea family, and I know he's going to be a big loss. If I could be added as a co-sponsor on this, I'd appreciate it.
Which O'Shea are we commemorating?
It's Grandpa O'Shea.
Who just passed away.
Yeah, he just passed away.
Okay.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor also.
Same here. Mr. Clerk.
Noted.
So, on a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2022-341, an ordinance authorizing agreement for construction phase engineering services, PE3, with Knight EA Incorporated for Cokie Mill Road and Greenbrier Drive Traffic Signal Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $60,714 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Motion, second for consent. Any discussion? There be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2022-342, an ordinance approving a final plan of the Springfield Junior College Minor Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2022-343, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation and Motor Fuel Fact Tax Funds, rebuild funds in an amount of $60,714 may be used for the construction phase of the Cokie Mill Road and Greenbrier Drive Traffic Signal Improvement Project, MFT Section Number 20-00493-00-TL for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Director Bottom, this is going to be a very significant east-west corridor. West of Cokie Mill, it's not opened up yet. Do we have plans to open it up? I think there's just like a four, maybe a four-block area that's, where it's still blocked, no roadway yet.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the development to wrap up the final phase, and then we'll construct a small couple hundred-foot portion as part of that project.
Okay. When do you think that might happen?
It depends upon how it develops. It could be as early as next year.
Okay. I tried to cut through there last night and couldn't get through, so that's great. All those- All those in favor of, uh, the consent?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty twenty-two, three forty-four. An ordinance authorizing settlement, settlement of workman's compensation claim for Jonathan Minnethall, an Office of Public Works employee for Case Number twenty-one dash WC dash zero one nine five three two.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent, any against? Um, any discussion, any against, uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three forty-five. An ordinance approving the appointment of Chatria Smith to the Springfield Communit- Community Relations Commission.
Move for consent.
Oh, that's our debate.
Motion and a second for debate, any discussion? I believe she could not make it tonight, so, uh, she's unavailable tonight. I think taking coursework, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, uh, for debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three forty-six. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract CS twenty-three dash zero five dash three eight with Masco Packaging and Industrial Supply Incorporated, Triad Industrial Supply Corporation, and Office Essentials for the purchase of janitorial supplies from August first, twenty twenty-two through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for the Office of Budget and Management for a total amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent, any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three forty-seven. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement, Midwest Risk Assessments Incorporated, to provide lead-based paint risk assessments and clearance inspections from March first, twenty twenty-two through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent, any discussion? There be none, go ahead.
Just real quick, do we have an idea of how many houses, um, will be assessed under this, for this amount?
Yeah, we can get that number for you.
Okay, thank you.
It's over seventy, I believe, but, uh, Krista Colas will send out an email with regards to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three forty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the execution of contract with Fair and Impartial Poli- Policing LLC for the Training Services, FIP, National Instructors, for all patrol and first-line supervisors for the city of Springfield in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent. Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three forty-nine. An ordinance authorizing a decrease in the class of D liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by Kiku Japanese Steak and Seafood House, LTD, doing business as Kiku Japanese Steak and Seafood House, located at thirty fifty Lindbergh.
Move for consent.
Second.
We've got one, two, three, four, five, six.
Move for omnibus.
Second.
There's a motion for omnibus, consideration of all six liquor.
Three fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, uh, fifty-three, fifty-four.
That's it.
No, not on fifty-three.
That does it.
Thank you, uh, Alderman Hanauer.
You can't do fifty-three.
On fifty-three?
Can't do fifty-three.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, there's a motion for omnibus, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, that means we're gonna consider these all with a unanimous vote after they're read by the Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty. An ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by Rosemar- Roseberry Group Incorporated, doing business as Legacy Point Eatery, located at eleven hundred West Legacy Point Drive. Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-one. An ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by Teccarilla El Polo Corporation, doing business as Teccarilla El Polo, located at six thirty-five West Jefferson Street. Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-two. An ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for Hunan Express Incorporated, doing business as Hunan Express Incorporated, located at two thirty-eight South Dirksen Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, is there a motion sent? There's a motion for, second. Second, regarding discussion, I believe, um, there's a, Mr. Dustin Coons here that is opening a restaurant that pertains to one of these, um, liquor licenses. Do you wish to say anything, Mr. Coons?
Yes, sir. Thank you, counsel. Um, I'm just here today, uh, wanna introduce myself. This is a gentleman looking to open that space over there by the Shields Building, uh, Legacy Point Eatery. Um, just a quick rundown, uh, we're looking to do something, uh, my chef and I have worked in the area, uh, Finley's Tap House, uh, and Chatham and Sangamo Brewing Company. Um, we're basically tired of deep frying things out of bags. We're looking to bring something healthier back to the area, some gluten-free options over there, vegetarian options, taking note in dietary needs, uh, as people move forward. Uh, we're looking at the development of the area and hoping to be a part of that.
Are you in the old Fox Run building?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And beautiful Ward Six.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
That takes courage to open a new restaurant, so, uh, congratulations.
Thank you, uh, been a Springfieldian most, uh, most of my life, graduated Chatham High School and, uh, just looking to do it for myself. I helped open Finley's and, uh, the restaurant Chatham, just looking for an opportunity to get into the business world myself.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, licensees or, uh, liquor licenses wish to speak out there? Okay, there be none?
Yes, I raised my hand on here.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I have a Ward Five business I would like for her to come and introduce herself to.
Thank you, Alderman, woman purchased.
I don't think that's in the omnibus, is it?
Hmm?
No, it's not in the omnibus.
So.
But it's okay.
Yeah, I just, just to be clear, can I, can we add that one to this list?
Yeah, three fifty-four.
We can, would you like for me to read it?
I would move that we add two fifty-four to the omnibus voting.
So, there's a motion to add it to two fifty-four omnibus?
Three fifty-four.
Sorry, three fifty-four.
Yes.
I gotta keep my reading glasses on.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any all those against, say nay.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-four. An ordinance to increase the number of Class AA liquor licenses by one for Ad Astra Wine Bar and Market LLC, doing business as Ad Astra Wine Bar and Market for the business located at three oh eight East Adams Street.
Thank you, I'm Christina Barbie, I'm the owner of Ad Astra Wine Bar and Market and I just wanna thank the council for, uh, looking over the ordinance request for the liquor license. I'm very excited to be a part of downtown's renovation and updates that we've been making for many years and I know this type of business has been requested for years and years. And, um, I, the public is already very excited for it and I have been hounded for about a year now to hurry up and open already. So, I'm very excited and thankful for all of you to be able to look at this ordinance and hopefully approve it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a little confused because I thought we were gonna add three fifty-three, which is a different one.
Skip fifty-three. I thought I asked fifty-four, but that's all right, we got it.
We got it.
So, Mr. Clerk, could you just run through the numbers that were proven, uh, with this vote?
Yep. The ones you're approving right now are twenty twenty-two, three fifty, three fifty-one, three fifty-two, and three fifty-four.
Yes.
But not three fifty-three, okay, that clarifies it.
Four consent.
Four consent?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, can I ask you who made the motion and second on the consent, please?
I probably seconded it.
Thank you.
Thought I did.
Or Aaron did.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-three. An ordinance to increase the number of Class I liquor licenses by Ruby Funeral Services and Crematorium Incorporated, doing business as Ruby Recreational Community Center, located at one oh one North Sixteenth Street.
Uh, um, we can motion this for debate, um, for tonight, but I, I understand she's here, she would like to speak.
Second, there's a motion and a second for debate.
Thank you, my name is Ruby Davis, I am the owner of Ruby Funeral Services and Crematories and I have expanded my business to a recreational center, which is right across the street from my facility and it's open for the public. My families will have first service as far as having a repass after their services and it's open to the community for wedding, receptions, family reunion, or any type of events. And I am looking forward to getting approved for liquor license just to cover the business. Anytime you have two to three hundred people in one facility, you can't monitor what they bring in. I just would like to be covered just in case they do bring alcohol in. It's not to serve alcohol, it's just to have the license in place just in case people do decide to bring it in and something happens.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, any, uh, discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Ruby, for contacting me, um, on this issue. Uh, uh, you know, and I'll have to ask Mrs. Zirkel on, on what, um, I believe there's some, 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 uh, insurance type of things that she could possibly get for that. So, what, what she, what she is worried about is if she has any type of, um, events in there and somebody brings in liquor and, um, there's a problem and our officers have to go over there. Um, she wants to be covered for that.
Yeah.
You know, I, and I don't think that a liquor license per se would fit, um, this particular situation, but, um, any, any help, but that would be great.
Um, the I, the I licenses for a rental hall, uh, there would be a requirement for, uh, dram shop insurance. Uh, a private, uh, uh, insurance company that would handle the property insurance should be able to write insurance that would cover the normal, you know, business activities for the rental hall.
Thank you, Mr. Zirkel.
So, what, so with this, with this liquor license, so, somebody would be able to serve, um, liquor in this, in this, in this setting?
That is correct.
Well, I, you know, I, I, you know, and, and, you know, we'll talk more about it next week, I'll do some more studying, but as, as, you know, on its face right now, I wouldn't support it in that area. Um, it's in our commu-, it's in, it's in our community, it's around homes. We've had significant issues with pop-up parties and things of that nature. Um, and, and, you know, I just, I just can see this being an issue when we're talking about two to three hundred people, um, you know, in that area. It's, it's, you know, it's not even enough parking for that, in that area, for, for to have that type of thing. Um, and we're talking about a newly developed area that we're trying to, you know, bring back to life. Uh, we just purchased those, um, UCP buildings, the other ones for, for recreation activities for young people and, um, you know, I, I, that's where I'm at on this, thank you.
Any further discussion? Uh, there, there's a motion for debate for next week, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-six. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of twelve thousand dollars for the Springfield Mile to be held September third through the fourth, twenty twenty-two, for the Springfield and Convention Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-seven. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of ten thousand dollars for the Old Capitol Blues and Barbecue Festival to be held August twenty-sixth through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent. Mr. Barry Friedman is here tonight, the owner of Alamo. Do you wish to say anything? You've got a, a, a pretty good, uh, history and a strong positive reputation for all the blues on Monday nights.
Uh, thanks for your consideration, uh, I don't really have a whole lot to add. This is, could be our, actually our eighteenth year of doing this. So, um, what this does is just help us bring in some national acts and stuff like that and, and we found even going into this year, the craziness of the acts that were five thousand dollar acts or twenty thousand and everything, I mean, everybody's trying to make their extra bucks. So, for us to keep this going and keep selling hotel rooms and, you know, we're using twenty-two ourselves and then we have, we have hotel rooms being used for people coming. So, this keeps people coming to Springfield from the surrounding area. We market to towns all around us besides Springfield, like, all the way to St. Louis. So, it helps us bring the act that makes people come downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Uh, there's a motion for consent, uh, if not, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-eight. An ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Downtown Parking Incorporated for the purchase of land and all improvements located at Fourth and Washington Street, PIN number fourteen dash thirty-four point zero dash one oh three dash zero two four in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars in closing costs and the amount of five thousand dollars and for a total amount not to exceed one hundred and five thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. There's a motion for consent.
Just a quick question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so, this is the ordinance last week, um, this is, Zirkel, I'd ask that we get funding information. Um, I don't see it's been updated in the ordinance sheet in front of us, so, um, can I just ask that this go on debate until we know what the funding is gonna be for next week?
Absolutely.
Motion for debate.
Bucket.
And in, in addition to that, that's, you know, the area where the ramp came down. And, uh, I think it would be helpful, Mr. Mayor and, and, uh, Director Bottom, if we have a, you know, a temporary plan for how that surface will be used? Are we gonna put some, you don't have to answer now if you don't want to, but we need a, a plan or, um, some, maybe a written description of how we're gonna use that space in, in the meanwhile. It's a pretty large, it's almost a full block.
Yeah, um, we are planning on doing surface parking with some green space along the, along the roadway, about ten feet of green space approximately, um, along Washington Street.
All right, any, uh, further discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite finished, Alderman, um, thank you for that, Nate. I just wanna be real clear, I don't really have an objection or a problem with this ordinance. I just would like to know how we're paying, what line it's coming from.
Sure, we'll let you know.
Um, and then, it's now that you've mentioned on parking, will that be municipal parking? Will that be metered or will that be free?
It's all free right now.
Under discussion, under review?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll designate some of those, uh, kids IM, ask for, I think, twenty to thirty spaces and then the other one is UIS, catty corner from that, but, uh, other than that, we'll have to make that determination.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, all in favor placing on the debate agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three fifty-nine. An ordinance accepting proposal and authorizing execution of contract number FD twenty-three dash zero five dash three nine for the purchase of fire equipment to, for a total amount not to exceed nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents for the Springfield Fire Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for consent, any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, three sixty. A resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and consideration proposing the amendments to Chapter one fifty-five, Section one fifty-five point four nine six of the nineteen eighty-eight City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to cannabis organizations modifying separation provisions.
Move for debate.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for debate, any discussion?
Yes.
Alder, woman dissent.
Thank you. Um, is this for everyone in the city or is this for a specifically designated property? Is this changing the entire city code or is it just for one?
Um, this, this is a resolution that presents the petition. What it proposes is to change the zoning code so that it would be applied to all industrial, uh, designated areas within the city. So, it's not limited to one location, but it would be basically industrial parks, of which I think we have four.
And then they would still have to come back through zoning?
This does not change the C P U requirement.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporation Council, and thank you for asking the question. Any further discussion? Oh, good. Gotta look at the screen. Uh, Alder, men Gregory.
Thank you. Um, as I said last week, I do ha- I do support this, um, in theory, and, and, and I'll join, um, Alderman Williams as a co-sponsor with hearing some of that information. Um, I also would like to, to add two amendments to this that, that I think are just and, and fair to address. Um, you know, me and Alderman Williams for the last three weeks have had some amazing ar- arguments about, um, about just, just really what, what I've mentioned before about, about, um, our, our city and our, our, you know, boundaries with, with this cannabis industry. Um, we have probably about like five to seven opportunities within our city to absorb some of these businesses over the next couple of years, right? Um, and, and, and some of, you know, some of the people who are looking here to locate in, in Springfield, um, don't have, um, the spacing requirements. So, you know, I wanna look at our, our, um, boundaries, um, for everything else but our large cultivation centers, um, which are the ones with, you know, um, from my studies have the fans and, and everything that's people, that people are worried about. Currently, I believe in Mrs. Zirkel can verify for me, but I believe our, um, dispensary, um, boundaries are at a thousand feet and a thousand feet between each other. And I would like to, um, introduce an amendment to address all of those. And that would be for, um, craft rows, infusions, and consumption lounge and transportation centers. Um, and transportation centers don't even have any product in them, in the place that they would be stored. It's nothing but some trucks. Um, they take those things from dispensary to dispensary and then they go park their, their vessels. Um, so that, that is my, my first amendment is, is to adjust, um, our boundaries down to a thousand feet, um, and a thousand between each other and, um, schools, churches, daycares. Um, and then my, my second amendment, and this really goes to, um, you know, a piece of property that, that is already operating, um, as a, um, a dispensary and, and that's to, uh, really remove our R five B requirement, zoning requirements. I would like to strike that out. Um, and that will also allow us to have more, um, cannabis business in the city within good boundaries. And that was my two amendments.
Will those two amendments be reduced to writing?
Sure.
Gregory?
I think that would be best if I could have an opportunity. We'll, uh, because there's, there is some, uh, technicalities to this. So, what we'll do is reduce it to writing and circulate that so it's clear, uh, you know, what the, what the change is.
Right.
So, tonight, we're gonna, um, put on debate. The ordinance has written, and if there's no further discussion.
There is, there is.
Plenty of discussion.
Sorry. I saw there's four, three new names that popped up. Okay. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Um, you know, without the setbacks that we, originally setbacks were twenty, twenty-four hundreds, uh, feet, I think it was. Um, and it took the setbacks in order to get people that were against cannabis to vote for cannabis. We would never have cannabis in this town and the benefit that, that some people, some, some, the people have gotten from it, um, with the programs that we've, we've established, had, had it not been for those setbacks. And I feel like we're kinda pulling the rug out from people because we got it. Now we, now we got it, they can't take it away. Now we're trying to, we're trying to lower it. And I think that there's, there's areas that I, I don't have a problem, but I don't think, I've always said twelve hundred, if we go twelve hundred, that's half of, half of what we originally had. And that's, that's as far as I'm, I'm willing to budge. Uh, the exception, I do have a, a, uh, a dispensary in a large building and, and, you know, I don't, I, they wanna put a craft grow out on the west end. I don't have a problem with the craft go- grow going in there because it still meets that, I think, as a fifteen hundred setback or whatever it was. Um, I don't have a problem with that. But, but I, I do, I, I do have a problem with moving, move, you know, kinda switching up on, on the citizens that we, we, and it was a, 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 Alderman Conley and, and Senator Turner were the ones that championed this. And, and there was, there was a lot of discussion. It wasn't an easy thing to go through. And I just feel like we're switching it up on people, you know, by, by trying to get, reduce it. Where's it gonna stop? You're gonna have it, next thing you know, we're gonna have it, you know, next door to a, a daycare center or something. I mean, it, it's, it, that's, that's my point, you know, and I, I just, uh, I understand, we need, you know, people are looking, but I just, I don't, I, I can't support less than twelve hundred. And, you know, I, I think that one other point I'd like to add is, I do believe, and I could be wrong, but one of the things that, that fell through the cracks when we did go from twenty-four hundred to, uh, fifteen hundred was the infusion centers. I think that that was cha- that didn't change. That's, I think every, we need to have everybody in the same, same thing. So, thank you.
All right, we got, uh, in this order, Conley, Gregory, and then Williams. Uh, excuse me, Conley, Fulgenzi, Gregory, and Williams.
And, and actually, Chair, I, I apologize. I was gonna ask, um, Alderman Gregory if there were other sections involved in his amendment. So, I'll wait until, um, Corporation Council gets set.
Okay, thank you.
Information to us.
So now, Alderman Fulgenzi.
Yes, um, I, I kind of support this ordinance. Uh, I saw, um, well, I can't remember the gentleman's name that was up there asking us for, uh, variances or talking about the fact that he couldn't find a building.
Damien Johnson.
What's his name?
Damien Johnson.
Damien Johnson. And I understand now he's moved to the Danville. And, uh, this is exactly the type of business that Lieutenant Governor, whatever her name is, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Gotta be kidding me. You're gonna stricken.
She mentioned that these are the kind of industries that we need to have in our low-income areas, our, our areas that, uh, have been caused, uh, some downtrodden areas. And we need to employ people in these areas. That's why this was initiated. And, uh, personally, I'd like to see this thing, even for Alderman Gregory's thing, I'd like to see it go to eight hundred feet. I think fifteen hundred feet is just, it's outlandish. Uh, we've, we've got metal stamping places, car crushing areas, uh, nuclear testing facilities. They're right next door to places. And I think we need to revive these industrial areas. Otherwise, they're just gonna be dilapidated and we're gonna lose a lot of the buildings that we have there now. So, that's my point.
Thank you, Alderman.
No ethics call on that one, Alderman Williams?
What'd you say?
No ethics call on that one.
On which one? I, I, I'm scared you're to speak.
Okay, great. Can't wait to hear it.
So, we've got, uh, Alderman Gregory again?
Yes. Hear me out, and this is my last time speaking. So, you know, in order for us to do this craft grow out there, R five B, gotta go. Gotta, gotta go. We gotta get that. So, so my, my, my reasoning and my, my whole thought process on, on, on reducing the, the boundaries down a little bit is, is dispensaries are at a thousand feet. The first people who was able to get in this were the medical industry. They was the first person to be able to get into this. And then they opened up others. So, there's three here, all, all was here previously, um, Erebus is in Grandview. So, they're the ones that have all the traffic, all the people in there. A craft grow's gonna be inside, they're gonna grow their thing and, and go about it. It's not gonna be any traffic there. Um, infusion, the same thing, transportation companies I just spoke on. So, you know, I, I, I get it that we definitely don't want it right next to a school, church, or daycare. And I'm not, I'm not advocating for that. What I'm, three football fields, three football fields is a thousand feet. Three football fields. You can't, you won't even be able to see it. Three football fields is what we talking about. That's a long way. And, you know, as, as we go, and, and, and I, and I wanna speak on this too. You know, um, our sister, now, now Senator Turner, you know, I worked with her every day. I was a brand-new Alderman with this. So, I didn't speak much on the, the whole thing, but I was right there along with her every day, um, especially with, with the, um, the programming and stuff like that. So, I was a brand-new Alderman. I was scared to death when this, when this came in because of the stigma on it. I still, to this day, have never been in a dispensary, never. Because it's, it's, it's still a thing. It's, it's, you know, some people, you know, uh, 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 you know, talk about this cannabis thing like, um, you know, it's only this makeup of people, uh, um, who indulge and things of that nature. But when I look on the news and I look at the lines and I see one point two billion dollars in, it's not very many people that look like me in the lines. But this, you know, but, but, but when their arrests come, you know, we're four to one. I'm gonna speak on some of this later. But, so, so we have some, some, some black men, um, that's a low percentage in ownership in the whole state that want to locate within our city. And they need some boundary reductions. They need some changes to be able to do that, or we'll have another one that's gonna leave our city. And at least a thousand feet, I, I, I would support eight hundred feet, but I think at least a thousand feet is fair. And I think, uh, removing our R five B is gonna open it up. And guess what? In a couple of years, we're gonna have to look at it again. We're, we're gonna have to look at it again, um, in some different situations. Um, I think our, the big cultivation centers that make the noise and smell, yes, they need to be in, in some, um, outskirts of the cities and things. But these small things, um, we haven't had a problem. The, the one downtown, it's, it's within a thousand feet from a church. It's around, everybody walks past it and things of that nature. And, you know, we haven't had any huge problems besides some people standing outside, trying to do what they do in every portion of our city. So, um, you know, I hope that we can get, come to a place where we can come to an agreement to at least help people stay and keep these businesses in our, in our communities. Thank you.
Okay, we've got Williams, descenso, Hanauer, and Conley.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I'll say my comments for the debate, but I, I will say the purpose of me bringing this forward is because I did not want to see another business leave Springfield. And I had one telling me they're gonna go to Lincoln, and I had another one telling me they're gonna go upwards toward, uh, Peoria, all because of our restrictiveness. And, and we tend to do this in Springfield. So, I looked at the setbacks, I looked at the situation, and then I saw the industrial parks, that people are already used to being industrial parks. And I'm, I'm saying, why not there? And it's when, uh, Teamsters Way came up, which is behind Walmart, in case you don't know, out there right off of fifty-five. And I'm thinking, perfect. And it's gonna go, and it didn't go because on the other side of the highway of fifty-five is a farmhouse, and it had the R zone, which, which killed it. So, I, I, I think we need for sure to be a thousand, eight hundred feet. And I think residential piece is hurting us. But I, this is all about trying to bring jo- keep jobs here and quit having these guys have to go somewhere else. So, if we start with our existing, as you said, buildings that are just sitting there emptying a lot of these industrial parks, perhaps we could utilize them. People are already used to them being there. It's not like they're just gonna build something big and, and it's gonna be new to them. They're gonna drive by it like they always. These places have, um, some form of a scrubber, so it won't be no smell. So, you'll drive by it and not know you went by it, pretty much. Uh, especially if it's located in just, so I introduced, uh, after meeting with the mayor and several of these individuals, this industrial piece. And that's where that comes from, for the whole city, all the industrial parks. And from there, um, there was some reaction from some of the guys in the business. Cause as you know, as time goes by, the governor releases more licenses and more different phases of the marijuana, the whole R three thing, you know, everything. And, and I wanna keep some of that in Springfield. People shouldn't have to lose. We had an exclusionary zone, we really did, based on our rules. Uh, love Doris Turner, love Sean, uh, Aaron. But I just think, the more I read about this, the more this kinda stuff's gonna happen with me, and you just gonna have to, you know, fight me with it. Because, uh, I, I see the purpose, I see the intent of the legislation, I see how it's practiced, not just here but nationwide. And, and I'm not sure we did it so smartly. Let me just say it like that. So, I'll, I'll wait for another time to finish. Thank you.
Alderwoman descenso, then Hanauer, then Conley.
Thank you. Um, let's be very clear what this ordinance is about. There is an Alderman's son that has a license who wants to put a craft grow operation in Ward Six that, with a two-hundred-foot setback, a two-hundred-foot setback. And I'm opposing it. So, this, this ordinance came up to counteract that. That's what this is about, enriching an Alderman's son.
Hey, that's kinda out of, out of line.
Oh, it's not. Cause that's what this is about. Because he has, he has gone to every single person around this horseshoe. Um, he has gone to neighborhood associations who do not support this.
Talk about the individual. You don't have to talk about a.
I, I, did I name a name? Could be your son, Joe. I didn't name anyone's name.
You referred to John Fulgenzi's son. I think we have to be careful of the way things are said and, and enriching somebody.
Really? Because a few weeks ago, Alderman Williams had no problem calling out Alderman Purchase and some other Alderman people.
I wasn't chair that night.
Anyway, let's just be clear about what the intent is here and, and what's going on here. And I oppose, um, you know, I'm okay with changing some setbacks. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But when you're really close to neighborhoods and really close to schools and really close to churches, we do have to be careful. I would love, I've been a strong supporter of cannabis, as you all know. Um, I have been in dispensaries. This is not something I'm opposed to. Um, but let's use some common sense too. You know, we wanna de-stigmatize things, you have to ease in. That's how it goes. You don't do it all at once. And I think we've done a good job of easing in so far. But let's just not jump headfirst and, you know, get rid of all setbacks and get rid of all zoning that's meant to protect us and to protect our community. And, you know, inner-city older neighborhoods, they want infill of, of houses and, um, you know, businesses that will create foot tra- traffic. That's not what these places do. As you said, you wouldn't even know what it is if you drive by it. It's hidden. We, these neighborhoods want exposure. So, you know, let's, let's just be very clear about what we're talking about here. And I don't mean to offend you, Alderman. I'm just, I've been offended by the way this has been handled with me. So, this isn't about you at all. And I apologize to you, cause it's not about you. But the way this has been.
But you've made it about me.
Well, I, I apologize for that. But you're, you're quoting something that your son was, was sending. Oh, you don't have to accept it. I don't care. That's fine.
I'm interested in what's good for Springfield.
Oh, well, what's good for your son, who lives in Sherman?
Can I help what my son does?
Uh, you, you are responsible for, for creating policy for this city. So, yes, you can.
Oh, my God.
Exactly.
Personal, I don't, I think we should keep it, uh, out of that kinda way. So, uh, let's see, we've still got, uh, Hanauer, Conley, Gregory, Williams, Fulgenzi again.
Um, real quick, um, what's the setback for liquor store or, or a bar or whatever to a school?
Or strip joint.
What's the, what is the setback? Because I know for a fact that we have one.
Five hundred.
Um, because when a bar was gonna be open, a pub was gonna be open in Ward Ten, it just so happened to be, I think it was a thousand feet or five hundred, I don't know what it was, but it was close to the District One Eighty-Six land that they, that they supposedly are gonna build a, a high school or something in when, by the time we're all dead. But, um, and I got a call saying, well, you can't put a bar there because there's, or anything with alcohol there because it's within, it's restricted. And I said, well, until you get a school there, it's not restricted. So, I, I, I think we need to know all, um, Mr. Zirkel, that would be interesting to find out what the restrictions are.
Um, we can pull that information together as well. There are certain setbacks on certain types of businesses, and liquor is one of those.
Right. And my, my point is, is if, if the liquor is a thousand, or we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna go cannabis less than a thousand. I mean, that's, that's kinda crazy to me. Um, but that's, I just, if you could get that to us, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman. And our Conley, Gregory, Williams, Fulgenzi.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I, I would just like to reiterate here. One of the big concerns in the original debate around this, um, was proximity to not just residences, but, but schools, daycares, um, and those, because we're, we're looking at protecting children, that there needs to be a buffer and a separation with, with, with certain businesses. Um, I, I don't wanna stigmatize the business, but, um, Alderman Williams' ordinance drops a fifteen hundred-foot setback to two hundred feet for residential and five hundred feet for grade schools, for schools, daycares. I, I mean, I, I have concerns about this. We had a horrible discussion in this council chambers about putting a center for health and housing within five hundred feet of a, a potential daycare, of daycare that I, as I understand it, since moved. I mean, I, I've, I got a lot of pushback on this, on the original ordinance. And, and I understand things have changed. I think that in the two years since cannabis has been legalized in the city, I, we see the, we see the income numbers. We see that it's popular. Yeah, Alderman, I've, I have no problem going into a dispensary, but Alderman Gregory, I understand where you're coming from with your points. I, you make a very valid point, and I, I think that's something that we need to keep in mind. Um, that, you know, maybe it's, it's easier for, for white women to get in line at the dispensary than, than it would, than your comfort level. I, I, I'm not gonna argue with you on that one. I will tell you, though, that I, I got feedback initially, and I've not heard anything since then, that would support what Alderman, Alderman Williams is saying, five hundred feet from a school and a daycare. I, it was a heavy lift the first time, Alderman.
Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's, your, no, your ordinance right here says, um, that, um, if you're in an I, I one, I two, they can be located no less than two hundred feet from pre-existing residential and no less than five hundred feet from public or private preschool, elementary or secondary or daycares, and then listing all the daycares. So, I, I'm just, I'd just like to reiterate, that's, that's a huge, huge reduction in setbacks for something that while we've gotten more comfortable with it, I'm not entirely certain that this community supports it. I'm looking forward to feedback from my ward. I'm looking forward to, to, to hearing more positions on this. But, um, these are some very big changes for zone, for setbacks that were put in for a very specific reason. So, I just, I just wanna give you that heads up. I'm not comfortable with this.
Okay. Alderman Gregory.
Just real quickly, I just, just wanted to say, so, to, to Alderman descenso's point, um, there was a C P U in it. So, that's why I was comfortable cosponsoring with this. Um, I definitely understand your concerns. I represent closely to that, to that area. Um, I, I had this conversation with Alderman Williams, and I've had this conversation with others. Um, while, while some areas are tight, you know, this area out
Um, while, while some areas are tight, you know, this area out there, um, there are some areas that, that, um, you know, aren't as, as tight as this area, that are, area that got, you know, Alderman Williams spoke on it, four lanes of traffic across. I think that's something that needs, you know, we, we can consider. Um, there's some spots in our, in our city in industrial zones that, that don't have this, um, housing complex all closed or schools and stuff that, that we probably would, would, would definitely consider. So that's why, you know, um, support this with a CPU in it. Without it, it'd be hard for me because I think that, that, and, and this is in my heart of hearts, I, I just think that with things like this and alcohol, um, there has to be some type of, uh, uh, automatic council body control. Um, I know you saying alcohol, but alcohol's like 500 feet. And, and while I get it, we've been drinking alcohol for a long time in this, in this country, but, you know, I just was listening to the senate hearings on, 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 on it get, being federally legalized. And one of the things that the doctor said is that all the drugs on the Schedule 1, um, list have no medical use at all, and this product does. So that's, that's, that was part of his, his fight to it, um, of why it shouldn't be there and why we should federally legalize it. So, you know, um, you know, alcohol, you know, we deal with that. And, and, and it's a lot closer than this. And I'm, I'm, I'm just saying 1,000 feet. And we got alcohol, you know, I got one right down from St. Pat's, uh, uh, school right now, school and a church, five, within 500 feet. Um, and I'm saying that 1,000 feet is three football fields and it's good for our city, it gives plenty of space, 1,000 feet between them or, or whatever the, the state law requires for some of them, I think 1,500 for some of them, um, that, that we can't even do nothing about. But I think 1,000 feet for dispensaries, craft grows, um, transportation and infusions, um, is, is, is a really good boundary, um, for us to be at in the city. And it's not too far from you, 200, my, uh, Mr., Mr. Hanauer.
That's not what the ordinance says.
No.
Uh, let's see, we got, uh, Alderman Williams?
Yeah, I, I'll just end by saying, you know, my purpose is to keep them here, keep them in Springfield to save jobs. I mean, my opinion of things is, you know, it's alcohol, look where it is today, uh, gaming, we definitely lived through that, look where it's at today. And in five to 10 years, we'll be laughing at a debate like this, cause I mean, but, but it takes some of us longer than others to get, to get there. And I'm just trying to save the opportunity for these guys and not lose. And then later on, I realize, you know what could have been in Springfield? So that's why I looked at, uh, something that's already there, that doesn't have to be built, existing buildings where most of these guys can't afford to build anyway, that's why they started looking at existing buildings and happened to try to find different places. So, uh, if you focus on the jobs, uh, places like industrial parks where that, we always will have some say through the CPU process. They always will have to come back. It's not like somebody can just show up, start building in your ward because we passed this. They still have to come back and, you know, we, we'll still have the final say and be very much involved, especially if it's in your ward. Uh, and I'll say to the aldermen that don't have a lot of industrial parks, maybe you, you don't see it that way. Maybe you don't see the, the empty buildings. I don't know, uh, who has, all has the dispensaries right now and all the situations, but it is a good ordinance. It is giving the guys a chance to stay here and not just one guy, uh, a whole bunch of guys that are getting licenses and different things that is associated with the marijuana law. Thank you.
Mr. Alderman Williams, just a point of clarification, as the sponsor of the ordinance, as introduced, as introduced, you're expanding just to industrial zones, is that correct?
Yes. I mean, that's the exception is, on, on what his footage is, that's why he wants to amend because I'm saying-
As introduced, just as introduced, it was just for industrial zones?
As introduced.
And then number two, would it be for any type of cannabis, uh, organization within the industrial zone or just growers?
Well, right now, I think I'm just addressing growers in mind right now.
As introduced.
And what has happened since then, I got a response that we're gonna fix it, let's just fix it all, infusion, you know, transport, all of it, because there's a whole lot to that law. And, and we may be back a few times as, as we get into this and people are operating in our center, um, in our city in different ways. Some of the operators that exist today, right now, in the theater, need some changes because they need some more things. So it's, it's not a bad thing, we're just keeping up.
All right, Alderman Fugendy.
One thing I wanted to point out is that nobody buys anything from these things. These buildings, they're gonna grow plants. And that's it. There, it's, it's guarded, there's fencing around it, uh, there is no individual sales. Everything is sold wholesale. So, I mean, it's not like there's a, uh, uh, dispensary in there. They don't come there and buy the product, nobody sells it retail, nobody even knows what's in the building.
Right.
So I, I think it's all, uh, just about nothing really.
Well, thank you for those comments and I'm, I'm just gonna say that, um, I've been against every expansion of marijuana in our city and so forth. But, um, on this, I just find the arguments confusing. Why? Because when we put in a dispensary right in the middle of downtown, uh, at the corner of Adams and 7th, a block and a half from our public library that children go to, a block from our presidential library, a block from two major hotels, no one had a problem with that. No one had a problem with that. So I just think there's some inconsistent logic going on here tonight. So, um, but, uh, let's see, we got, uh, Alderman Fugendy, you've already spoken, and now we got Alderwoman Descenso.
Um, Alderman McMenamin, I just want to point out that pot tourism is a, it's a real thing. And when, you know, I went down there on January 1st of 2000 just to see what was going on, because I knew it would be, people had been camping out for days to buy pot legally in Springfield. And it was cold, but I drove around the block several times just to see it was going on. So people drove here from Wisconsin and from Minnesota and from, you know, Iowa to camp out in the cold in Springfield and buy pot. So pot tourism is a big thing. And Alder, Alderman Fugendy, I agree with you, no one will know what's in these buildings. But they do now. They're, they're gonna know now because some issues have been made with certain buildings. So I, I completely agree with you that in a normal situation and if this was handled normally, no one would know.
So, you know, different things are popular in different places. I mean prostitution's popular and legal in, in one state.
Correct.
But I'll say this, uh, yeah, I saw those lines too when the pot center opened up, uh, but I, now you can go by and you see people prone on the ground, laying on the ground, two blocks from our hotel, and it's just been a terrible hurt to our reputation and to the experience that the visitors come to our capital city when they see that downtown. Uh, people, um, um, not fit to stand up, laying on the ground downtown, that's not good, it's right at our dispensary.
Hasn't kept me away.
So now we got Alderman Fugendy, wish to comment again?
I just want to make one last point. This is not a dispensary, we don't elicit any kind of drugs in, in these craft grow situations. All they do is grow the plant.
I just said that. I'm glad to see you so passionate about cannabis, Alderman.
I couldn't hear you because my thing doesn't work very good. But the thing of it is-
I'm glad to see you so passionate about cannabis.
To compare this to a dispensary is, is really not a, a fair proposition.
Agreed.
You can't interrupt.
Too late.
All right. So, um, we've got, uh, I think everyone's said something that wanted to say something on this. So, uh, we've got a motion for debate, all those. And by the way, this is, we're just sending this to zoning commission for a discussion. We won't get to-
Call the question.
-talk about this for a couple of months. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say no. So it's, it passes, uh, for the consent agenda. So now we're at the-
Debate.
Sorry, yeah, excuse me, that's a, thank you. This went on for so long, I lost track. So that's for debate. So now we got unfinished business, anybody got unfinished business for tonight? They're being done, let's go to-
I believe Alderwoman Purchase does.
So I'm not looking at the screen. So, you know, I've been doing this for 11 years, I never had to look at the screen, now I gotta look at the screen.
You can do it, Joe.
So Alderwoman Purchase, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I do have a couple announcements in old business, but I would like to address the elephant in the room. What happened to me last Wednesday was just so uncalled for.
What happened?
And we're leaders on this city council, we should not be disrespecting each other. We have spent a lot of money for us to press these buttons and wait till our terms to speak. I just heard Alderman McMenamin say something about people laying on the ground, but he wasn't attacked. He wasn't yelled at. This weekend, we had a cleanup in Lincoln Park and we was harassed by those same people that you're talking about laying on the ground. One man jumped up at us while he was laying on the ground.
That's bad.
And these are innocent people out walking with me to pick up trash, to beautify the gateway for the state fair coming up this week. So I would just like to reiterate as leaders, how do we expect the community to come up and address us when we're disrespecting each other? Calling us man, just not respecting each other. We have to really, we have to really be an example of how we want the city of Springfield to see us while we're sitting up here.
Thanks for those comments.
And I wasn't done. But, um, I did want to say thank you to Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association and NEET Association too, which is, um, the North End Take Two. We both came together in order to clean up the areas that go into our gateways for the state fair on Saturday. And then I also would like to recognize the Springfield Police Department because again, last Wednesday, I was trying to finish a statement when I made, when I was talking about a gentleman who has been living behind Quick and Easy for over 30-plus years, he was attacked by the homeless population. And he's over 80 years old. That's a problem. And we used to have a substation that was open at Quick and Easy where we didn't have to pay for it. It's accessible. And I just wanted to recognize the police department for, um, speaking with our CEO for Quick and Easy over Central and Southern Illinois to say that they are open to having a presence there. The second part that I had brought up before I was cut off was that it wasn't just the homeless, it's also just criminal activity that's just on the rise over there. We had a bank that was robbed, we had a Family Dollar that was robbed, we have our noonance who has threatened to leave three times since I've sat up here since September 7th. That's an issue for me. And when my residents are calling, I can do a lot of calls behind the scenes and talk to departments, talk to the police department, but sometimes you have to address things publicly too, so people know that you care and they understand what's going on. And so that's what I wanted to say and, and just ask that we just really, really try to respect each other while we're sitting up here on this horseshoe.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's, that's good comments and it gets tougher after a four-hour meeting, but that's no excuse. So, uh, you gotta watch yourselves. Uh, Alderman Gregory?
Thank you. And, and, and Alderwoman Purchase, you know, I, I was gonna apologize to you at the end of this meeting because I'm a man and it's the right thing to do and I shouldn't have interrupted you and I apologize for that. My interruption or, and my comments, um, um, were driven off passion because that's how I am. I've, 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 I've had some passionate conversations, me and Christian, we went back and forth and, and I still respect her and I still respect you. And this probably won't be the last passionate conversation that, that I'll have, I'll try not to interrupt, I guarantee you that. I, I promise you that, I won't interrupt you or anyone else up here, I will work on that portion of it. But I stand in what I'm saying. I understand that, that some people, um, who happen to not be homeless, um, do bad things. But I, I stand in my comments of saying that, you know, we, we can't push everything out on them. The, the people, the people that Alderman McMenamin is, is, is talking about that's prone and laying down, guess what, they've been laying downtown way before that's dispensary gang. They, they, they're all over, they're not just at the dispensary, they're on 5th and 6th Street and over in my ward and over on 6th Street. They're, people who are falling on hard times are, 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 are very, um, it, it, it's just happening more and more. Thus why we, we try to push programs like that. So some of my frustration does come from that. Um, um, you know, when I walk across young men who, who don't want to bother anybody or don't want to, um, go back to a life, a unsavory life, when I run across them and, and, you know, we, we don't have, you know, programs for them or we're trying to put things, um, forth to them. You know, you know, short story, um, young man just, you know, been, been working hard and, you know, been, been, been trying to do everything he can to keep his head above water. He got a, he got him a job, he was so happy for it, and then guess what, he was let go in two weeks. And, and we had a conversation and he was gonna go back to the streets. And I said, man, just hold out, just hold out. We gonna get you something going, we gonna get some programs going and I'm gonna refer you to anything I can and write you a letter, a letter of recommendation. So that's my passion that came out, but I apologize for interrupting you and I'm a man of our mind and I always will be and I apologize about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, follow-up to Alderwoman, uh, Conley's question about 2022-347 about the assessments of the number of houses, it's 170 houses for the, uh, $3.4 million lead grant, um, assessments of that, they thought they'd cover at least 170 houses.
Wow, thank you, Mayor, that's wonderful.
That's a lot of coverage for the lead paint problems. Um, any further, uh, discussions on, under new business? If not, we've got, go ahead.
Actually, we were on old business, I do have new business.
Okay.
Um, and Director Bottom, if, if I could just have a minute of your time, um, just want to say, um, Ward 8 was one of the, um, first wards, um, in the branch collection this, this, for this, this month, this, this quarter. And, and while it's fabulous, um, it also might, means that most of my ward had their branches collected right before that big storm came through. Um, I've driven through the ward, there are significant piles throughout, throughout my ward. Um, and just if you could just explain, we, it was a big storm, um, in fact, I saw some of really big branches, um, in your ward, Alderwoman. Can people call you or should they call me and I send those to you? What's the best way to get these, these storm, the storm damage cleaned up?
Yeah, we're gonna have to go back through obviously after the storm. We still are going to stay on schedule with our current program, so we don't want to get off schedule and then we will, we will pick them up and then, uh, we may even get to some if we finish, uh, a week or a few days early. And then at the end of the month, I would like to know if there's still a list.
Thank you. And I, and I know you've done that before and I appreciate it very much, it makes a big difference. I just wanted to make sure I said it again, because I, I've had some, some people complaining about it and, I mean, God love my, my, my ward had, they had their branches out on the curb ready to go, but it's, we, we had some big, big weather come through that made an impact.
We didn't, we'll adjust the operations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Public Works Director Bottom, we've got, um, a long lineup here, Purchase, Conley.
No, no, I'm, I'm done.
You're done, okay.
Gregory.
So some of these don't get eliminated, okay. Gregory, then, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Purchase? Yes. I have two, but I got one for you too. Director Bottom, can you just explain the, how the process is working with Public Works going through the alleyways to clean up, um, branches and weeds that's kinda hanging out over into the, the alleyways? There's a lot of people messaging saying, hey, my alley hasn't been done yet. Julia had put something out about two weeks ago, I think, or a week and a half ago, and I shared it on social media, so a lot of people are like turning in what their areas are and sending photos. Can you just explain how you go through the process and it says that we're going throughout the whole entire city?
Yeah, well, I mean, ultimately, you should be maintaining your property and it shouldn't be overgrowing and we can cite and our housing division has cited before. With that being said, we still have to provide services, uh, the, the, the garbage trucks still have to get back there and we will systematically work through them and, you know, we do have complaints, so we'll have our crew that we have designated to do that, um, cut back the alleys. However, right now, obviously, we're busy with, uh, with the branch pickup for, for this month.
Now, let me ask you just for clarification, like you said, homeowners have to maintain their property, so if they're not maintaining them and our public work crews have to come out and do it for them, do you cite them first and then do it or?
So-
So people understand.
So, yeah, um, you know, if we get a, if we get a complaint about it and there's So yeah, um, you know, if we get a, if we get a complaint about it and there's overgrown alleys, we will send our inspectors out there sometimes and, and cite people. However, with that being said, sometimes it gets to be a little overwhelming and we will just have our, our crews come back and, and cut back alleys. Uh, we still have to provide the services so, so that our truck, our, the garbage trucks can get down the alleys. So, so we do cut back alleys though.
Okay. And then are we completed with all the trees that we wanted to take down downtown?
The, all the trees have been removed is my understanding. However, right now, we're, we're doing the removal of some of the stumps at this time.
Okay. And what's the timeframe? Are you still doing that in kinda like the middle of the night or in the daytime?
Um, it, it, it varies. Uh, we're starting to work in the, in the, in the daytime as much as possible. And we're trying to not obviously disturb any residences.
Yeah, I just had a, a neigh, uh, not a neighborhood, but a residence meeting downtown. And that was still, one of the concerns that they had was are they still tearing down trees? Are they, are they doing it in the middle of the night or are they doing it in the daytime? So I told them I would ask you to say.
I will verify that they're complete in the day, the time of day. I know they're working during the day today.
Okay. And then on a lighter note, it's National Farmers Market Week. And I just wanna strongly encourage everybody, also a fun fact that we're like the largest downstate producing farmers market here in Springfield. If we had room for ten more, then we would really be the largest in the entire state. And so I just wanna encourage my colleagues and the, the public to go out Wednesday from eight to twelve and also on Saturday from eight to twelve to support our farmers market. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
All right. Uh, thank you. I appreciate it. So, you know, I, I often have to ask some tough questions and, you know, it just is what it is. But, um, so recently, you know, just the other day, we, 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 there's an article in, in Springfield Leaks. You know, and, and, you know, it bothers me, you know, that, that, you know, we have these issues where, where people are getting hurt and, you know, we have these, these officers that, that are not attending to what we need to attend to. High respect for Chief Scarlet. I wish he was here. So, so Deputy Chief Stunkel didn't have to talk about it. But I, I just feel like when we have these situations, um, no, I don't wanna know about every petty thing that goes on. But I do wanna know about situations like that, especially when the weekend before or, you know, some weeks before, we had this same issue reported about not responding to accidents that are right in front of people and things of that nature. So, so I, I just feel like, you know, we get reports on, you know, who's getting arrested for gun charges, et cetera, et cetera, that we should also receive these, receive this information as well, at least pull us in as active session and let us know that this may be coming out. So we can know what to tell our constituents. And I know you can't tell us much because it's under investigation. But, you know, we, we, we don't like, I don't like being surprised about it. And, and I'm totally, you know, in shock that, to read some of that. I, I don't know if it's true or not or, or what, what have you. But I will say that, that we have to do a better job at addressing these things. Um, you know, my second part of my question is, you know, about a month ago, we had these, um, these, these stop data things, you know, um, you know, young black males or whatever stopped more than, than anyone else. I know it's a tough subject. I know we don't like about, I don't like freaking asking about it. But I got to because I wanna hear from you and I want the community to, 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 to speak theirs. I, I know we've talked about this before. I asked Chief Winslow, I love Chief Winslow to death, but I asked him the same tough questions. And he always say, you know, um, it's not totally true and, you know, some of the numbers repeat stops. So, so I, I think, you know, when this thing comes out, because it's not, it's never gonna stop. It's gonna come out every year. So I think we, we, we have to say, well, you know, our true count, you know, some of these, you know, have been multiple stops. Or somebody's known for, you know, uh, 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 having a gun. I, 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 I get it, you know? It's my, you know, my community that, that's suffering most of this, right?
Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
With all due respect.
You gonna cut me off?
No. I don't know what we're talking about because I haven't read that leaks article. I don't think most of us here maybe have read about the leaks article.
I think there's two separate ones. If I could address maybe the leaks one, let's just pass that one.
We just need to know what we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
I think Springfield Leaks, and I'm not familiar if there was a recent article. If there was, I think it was a repeat of the original article. And we did put out a press release that would have been sent to all of the other persons after that incident occurred. And we did put officers on restricted duty and we did put that out. So I'm only aware of the one incident.
Okay. So there's only one incident like that? Okay, it's a powerful incident, but thank you. I, I appreciate you for clarifying that because I really, it really made me sad because I'm like, man, this can't be the second time in a, a couple of months that we've had a situation like this.
I believe there's a second article on the same incident.
Thank you.
You wanna, you want me to address the other?
Yes, please.
And I, we are still digging into all those numbers. You know, we got them same time everybody else did and everybody wanted us to, to answer those questions. So we're still analyzing those. But I wanna take you back to, you know, March of twenty twenty-one, when some of you were out with us, standing on the side of the road, you know, coming out against violent crime and the task force that we created and where our numbers were at for violent crime in March of twenty twenty-one. You know, we saw our shooting numbers in the beginning of the year triple from where they were the year before. And we put together a task force of officers and we sent them out there to make traffic stops and to stop the shooting. And, you know, you talked about your community and I, you know, these are, like you said, tough discussions, right? Ninety-five percent of our, ninety-four percent of our shooting victims, I don't have the twenty twenty-one numbers, but in twenty twenty, ninety-four percent of our shooting suspects were black males. And we're sending officers out there to make traffic stops, to stop shooting. And unfortunately, that's the area where we're gonna be making those stops is primarily the east side where those shootings and shots fired take place. And that is a hard discussion, but we didn't experience the same increase in violence for the rest of the year that most of the other communities in Central Illinois did. So we were successful. We took a record number of guns off the street last year. And a lot of those came as a result of those traffic stops. So we'll get something out once we have all of those numbers, but just remember where we were in March and the actions that we took to, to address that violent crime that was happening.
I respect that. I live in a community and I, and, and I get it, right? So, so the things that I want us to concentrate on is, is the people that get stopped. And it's not the people that we're looking for. And how do we build back their trust? That's, that's, that's what I'm struggling with on how to, you know, to, to, um, how do we, how do we, how do we do that, you know, and get the right people with the guns and not so much the, the, you know, people who are just driving down the street or, you know, like, for instance, I said this before at, at a thing. I, I really have a problem with us pulling over people with tenant windows. When we have tenant windows on our cars, on our CWLP things, I, I just think it's a bad precedent. But that's just my thought. And my final comment is, is, and, and, you know, I'll send this to Chief. But I think we need to reimagine our street crimes unit. I, I really do. I think we need to reimagine, you know, what they, what they're doing, what their goals is. I get, um, um, what they do. But, um, it, it is, 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 is hurting, you know, it's, it's hurt, it's, 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 it's this thing, you know, we, we, we jumping out on folks. It's not the right for peoples sometimes. And then that just carries on into the, into the narrative that, that only, only, only young black males are getting stopped. So I just, I just wanted to make those comments, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, just announcement, National Parks Service is hosting a public forum tomorrow at six o'clock at the NAACP offices at eight zero one South Eleventh Street to discuss the Springfield Race Riot Act Special Resource Study. So it's the next step of memorializing the race riot site by the railroad tracks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to citizen request to address the committee, is Mr. Bob Emel here? Mr. Emel, sorry for the loss of your father, I believe, this year.
Thank you very much.
Sure, 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 sure.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bob Emel and I am a member of the Historic Sites Commission here in Springfield. But more importantly, I am a deacon at First Presbyterian Church. First Presbyterian Church origins date back to eighteen twenty-eight, just ten years after Illinois became a state. Our first church building was in the block that's currently between Third and Fourth Streets and between Washington Monroe Streets here in downtown Springfield. And that building served the church from eighteen thirty to eighteen forty-three, when it could no longer accommodate the growing congregation. A new church building was built just north of the original building at what is now the southeast corner of Third Street in Washington, directly to the south of the current Amtrak station. Now, the Lincolns rented a pew and regularly attended church services at that location. The annual pew rental was thirty-six dollars, which was a lot back then. Mr. Lincoln, however, never formally joined the church, although his wife became a member in eighteen fifty-two. And the pew was saved from the wrecking ball and relocated to the current building in nineteen twelve by our church member, John W. Bun. And the church's third and current building at Seventh and Capitol, which if we could look outside the blinds, you would see it right out there, was originally built for the Third Presbyterian Church of Springfield, which offered to sell it to First Presbyterian in eighteen seventy-two. So this brings me to why I'm here today. Now, that block where our second building was located was recently demolished this year and is owned by the city. A plaque recognizing the location was on the exterior of the building, facing Washington, just to the east of the entrance to the bar known as Club Station House at three oh six East Washington. I passed out to all of you images that I took of the plaque before it was, uh, the building was torn down. As a representative of the church, we as a congregation wanna know what happened to the plaque? Did the demolition company salvage it? Was it written into the demolition contract that it was to be salvaged? Or sadly, is it in a landfill? In any case, we feel that the plaque needs to be replaced and we feel that the city bears the responsibility to replace it. Now, I understand and we just heard, uh, from you just a, a little bit ago that in the short term, that property will be used as a parking lot. Perhaps a pylon near the street can be erected with this plaque or a reproduction of the plaque. And when the site is sold to a private developer, can we make sure that the plaque continues to be displayed to the public? So in conclusion, I wanna thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to bring this to everyone's attention. And another piece of the Lincoln legacy is a letter that's framed in our Narthex. And this is a letter that Mary Lincoln wrote from the White House to her friend, Mrs. Melvin, here in Springfield in eighteen sixty-one. Now, a significant part of the letter is saying, is Mrs. Lincoln saying, when the family finishes its services here in Washington DC and returns to Springfield, showing us that she had every intention of returning. And she concludes, we would like to have our pew back as we've become very attached to it. Needless to say, that didn't happen as President Lincoln was assassinated in April of eighteen sixty-five. Now, this tells me that Mrs. Lincoln had every intention of bringing her family back to Springfield when her husband's administration was over. She wanted to pick up where they'd left off, but sadly, that was not meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Ms., that's my training authority. Mr. Emel, you know, as to the plaque, that was your main point. I walked that area frequently and I recall seeing that plaque before the demolition came down. Uh, and then it, and then it was no longer there before the demolition happened. And it seems to me, I had a conversation with the owners of the Click Bar that used to be involved with the station house. And I think they told me that Mr. Danby has the plaque. So.
Ryan Bandi?
Ryan Bandi. Sorry, I'm saying that wrong name. Ryan Bandi has the plaque. So, um, I don't think the city took possession of the plaque. So hopefully we can find that plaque and you have an outstanding recommendation that we reposition that plaque where the original location was of the, of the church.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question. So when you say rent it, they, they, they rent it pews back then?
Yes, at that time, it was customary that families could rent a pew. And that was basically in, in lieu of passing around a collection basket.
Oh.
Yes, yes. And, and yes, in case you're wondering, um, and I just did tours over at our facility today. Somebody asked, they says, well, what happens if somebody comes in and they didn't rent a pew? And, um, yes, we had, they had such thing as unreserved seating.
Okay.
General admission.
Thank you, Mr. Emel.
Thank you.
And we have another.
Real quick.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thanks for the information. That's very good. Well, we will replace the plaque regardless. Or if we don't locate it, we'll have it commemorated again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one other citizen request to address the council from Mr. Hakeem. And I talked with Mr. Hakeem before the meeting started. And I think this is a, um, an issue that could best be resolved with, well, we'll let Mr. Hakeem have a few words, but Mr. Hakeem, who is your, okay. Have you discussed this with your alderman? May I ask?
I'm trying to get in contact, uh,
Yeah. You're here frequently and oftentimes your issues are very, you know, fact-specific that aren't really resolved by the alderman, but by the city staff, maybe in, working with the alderman. So I hope you can summarize this in a way that makes sense.
What the problem is now, you know, my mobile home was burned down in September twenty-ninth due to electrical fire. But we're not gonna go there right at this time. But the building and zoning is requesting for a title. Cause they're saying back in nineteen eighty-one, the building record residential, the mobile home was a twelve-by-forty. If you look on the internet, Google it, no mobile home is made at twelve-by-forty. It's a twelve-by-seventy or larger or twelve-by-sixty-two or something like that. All I wanna do is replace my mobile home that burnt down. Okay? So far, I'm being told, okay, you gotta do this. You gotta get this permit. Then when I do get that, oh, you gotta do this. Okay? I'm, I'm going through these hoops, but every time I finish one hoop, oh, you gotta jump through another hoop. I'm getting sick of that. If you're gonna do something, do it all at one time. So that way I know what I have to put out in cash. Okay? Now, if I have to redo the foundation, get somebody out there to tell me, oh, the foundation's gotta be tore up and redone. And I'll, and I'll get that done. Just don't say, oh, you gotta go and hire an engineer. Well, I have to go hire an engineer for my building. Okay? Which was, well, wasn't in the city limits, but it was in the county. Okay? A certain-sized building shed, yeah, you gotta get a permit. But anything under a certain size, you don't have to have a permit, especially when it's portable. But that's neither here or there or about this. What I want done is the fact I can go and replace the mobile home that was lost so I can live in it. During the wintertime, I lived on the property in the snow, okay? In a tent with a woodbirder, because I didn't have no place to go. Now.
Who's responsible for the, for the problem? Who's responsible? Who do you need to talk with to get this resolved?
Need to talk to this.
I'm trying to help because it's.
All right. CWLP.
Is this a CWLP issue, a Public Works issue? Is it?
CWLP started the issue. When they come out and they pulled the meter, put two blocks on the back of the meter so, uh, we can get the electric panel box and everything all renewed. But one of the blockage was cracked. So one leg of the power line was still going into the house instead of two, and it overheated and exploded everything.
Well, you, you, if you wanna summarize, you could have, you got maximum forty-three more seconds.
Okay. All I want is to replace that mobile home on my property without any more hassles. I wanna live peacefully. I don't wanna argue. I don't wanna fight. But if we have to go there, then, then of course you got a city coun, uh, corporate counsel there. He knows what to do and I do too. You know, but I want to resolve this. He knows what to do. And I do too. You know, but I want to resolve this.
Point of order. If he's threatening lawsuit, we got to cut this off.
I'm not threatening lawsuit.
Did he not just allude to a lawsuit?
No, I did not.
Well, your time is up, Mr. Hakeem. I'm sorry.
Well, he brought the issue up. I'm threatening lawsuit. No, I didn't.
Time was up anyways.
But, okay. Does anybody got anything to say?
Yes. Have you ever reached out to your alderwoman, Lakeisha Purchase?
Last time I was here, I tried to talk to her.
And I had you, I stood there and I had you talk to Director Harris.
Right.
They filled me in what was going on with you. And we haven't had anything else come up. But you have not reached out to me to tell me anything.
Okay. Well.
Nothing.
You, can you give me your phone number and I'll call you so we can set up a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, you got them pictures or did you already pass them on?
You're going to have to work out this outside of the chambers. Okay, Mr. Hakeem? And, uh, thank you, Alderwoman.
I just want to acknowledge that I'm the alderwoman for that area.
Okay. And if everybody would, if they got the pictures, give them to Miss Purchase.
We all got the same pictures.
No, they're all different.
You want?
Oh, no, again. Oh, sorry.
So, sorry, ref. I didn't see you asking to comment earlier. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. Just, just real quick. Um, I did get, hear back from Ryan Bandy. He does have the plaque. Um, yeah. I told him that it was, is it First Presbyterian, correct?
Correct.
Um, and I would suggest you contact him. I'll get you his phone number. And you guys, you guys can work it out. Is that, that all right? And, because he was planning on getting it cleaned up. And I think he was going to keep it. But that's, that's between you guys.
So. Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. We solved a problem tonight. That's wonderful.
Yes.
Got one thing.
Good work.
So that's, that's good.
Good work for this one hour meeting. Much appreciated.
We haven't been to executive session yet. Do we have any executives? All right. Is there a, a motion to adjourn then?
No move. Second.
All in favor, say aye. The ayes have.
Aye.